Good.
You are on.
All right, good evening. Welcome to the special school committee meeting of August 8th, 15th, 2021. If everyone could please rise for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, and for our liberty and justice for all. Okay, first on our agenda is public input. And if someone has anything they would like to say now in the public, they're welcome to. They're also welcome to speak after we we talk about our action items. Does anyone have any comments now?
If anybody in the audience does, they can raise their hand and zoom.
Good. Okay. So we have one action item. It is to consider, discuss, and vote to require all attendees at school committee meetings to wear a mask regardless of vaccination status. I would like to add to this that masks should be worn correctly. Or how we suggest that they wear a mask, that the mask completely cover your nose and mouth and fit snugly against the side of your face and don't have, leave any gaps.
Could we say in accordance with the school dress code? I think it says that language in there, right?
Sure. Yeah. Okay.
And it could be a cross-reference.
Does anyone have any discussion on this item?
Like to say something on it.
All right, go ahead, Mike.
So just, I ended up reaching out to speak to the governor's office and to the Department of Health because I wanted to fully understand what we're dealing with here. And everything goes, they were very helpful, which I was kind of surprised. But everything goes back to March of 2020 when they started doing all the data, if you would. And I was, I kind of zoned in on just Little Compton per se. I was, I was interested in Little Compton, how we're doing as a community ourselves. Not the whole state in general, but just Little Compton. And I, and I keep hearing this thing about the numbers going up, numbers going off. So I went back and when I started looking at the, the cases by month of what we've actually had for COVID cases back in December. And just to preempt that, we, since March of 2020, we've had 208 cases in total. That's not just the school, that's the whole town, 208 cases overall. But in, in December, we had 50 cases. In January, we had 49. February, we had 11. March, we had 18. April, we had 25. In May, we had five. In June, we had less than five. July, we've had less than five. The first two weeks of August, we've had less than five for the first two weeks so far. We basically ranked 38 out of 39 cities and towns COVID cases per 100,000. I think this is a town, whether it's the school or whether it's the whole population in town, I think we're doing very well. Yeah, it's not ideal, but we could be in a lot worse scenario than what we're, we're at right now. All of our cases, with the exception of, if you go back, you can look at the daily rates. So right around the holidays in December, our, our numbers went up a little bit. But for the most part, all of our numbers have been at zero or less than five every day.
Say the numbers again, starting in December.
Fifty, forty-nine. February was 11. March was 18. April was 25. And then it dropped down to five, less than five, five. And then the first two weeks have been less than five per week. So I mean, overall, and, and you can tell when there was vaccinations and there wasn't vaccinations. I mean, we've been actually doing, our numbers are actually been doing a lot better than they were, yes, in December and January. And I, and I get that. So there, there was that portion of it. Then there was the cases that I read from Lori. One of the things that it talked about was the, the mask. And the regular mask that everybody wears that, and I'll eat, not to pick on, but the sign, the ones that you can see, they can pick up in the, in the store. That was, when they tested that, they tested that, the, the neck gaiters, the N95s. I didn't want to test that 51% effective. The N95s was at 99%. I kind of looked at that when I see a test result at 51%. If there was a teacher in the school grading the, grading the paper, 51% would have been a fail. It's not good enough. So to sit there and say we're gonna, whoa, whoa, whoa.
So we're gonna mandate N95s? Is that what you're saying?
I didn't say, I didn't say that.
Oh, okay.
I didn't say that. But everybody's under the impression that those masks are doing everything. 51% to me is, is not doing much. If you came back to me and said those masks are doing 70%, 80%, I could understand them. But it's not. So to sit there and, and I don't know, maybe it makes people feel better. It doesn't make me feel better than knowing that that thing is only 51% effective. What is it really doing? I mean, here we are sitting, we just.
So, so what are you asking? What are you asking? What's your solution to? I'm, I'm, you're, you're regurgitating facts and stats and data that we've heard over and over again. So.
Well, I did.
What's your solution?
Because I didn't, I didn't hear it before, so I wanted to make sure that I, that's why I went and did my research to ask, to make sure I knew what I was talking about before I came here. So if you've heard it.
Well, what, what, this is what I'm saying. What is it that you do in your day to day? What do you do? What's your profession?
I, I manage businesses. What's?
What's your profession? You manage businesses?
Yeah.
When somebody tells you how to do your job, how do you feel?
It's my job. It's my business. It's the way I.
How do you feel though?
I run.
Somebody says, I, Michael, I know you, you've been doing this for 10, 15, 20 years, but I, I think I can do it better. How does that make you feel?
It doesn't matter. It's irrelevant what I.
It's irrelevant. Do, do you believe that that person can do it better?
Again, it's irrelevant for the topic that we're talking about, right?
It is not. We are continuing to, you sound like you're undermining the doctors, the people that have been in the trenches, epidemiologists for decades, trained under, under teachers, then gone into hospitals and it's, and to like question it. Yes, I welcome the questioning. But what is the solution to you bringing up the question? Are you saying no masks?
I'm not undermining, I'm not undermining anybody. I'm basically seeing facts that have been provided by the state of Rhode Island.
And I'm asking you, what's the solution to everything you're talking about?
I don't, I don't think the mask, why are we gonna mandate the mask when we're saying that the vaccinations are what we want people to go out and do? If the vaccinations work so well, why are we gonna push that we say you have to have masks when they're only 51% effective?
I think I can answer that question. Um, because we don't know who's vaccinated. We don't, especially in the context of school committee meetings, we don't know who is gonna come in person and what their vaccination status is. So we can't just assume that everybody's vaccinated and that we will all be safe. Data is trending that while there are mostly people vaccinated are not getting the COVID-19 virus, that there are some breakthrough cases. So there's that as well. As Lori was mentioning before the meeting, layering all of these techniques is one of the best ways to mitigate any potential spread in the virus. And then I wanted to also comment on what you're saying about the 51% reliability is that I have read multiple times and I'm happy to, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm happy to find the information and share it with everybody that maybe one person wearing one mask is 51% effective. But once everybody's wearing a mask, that rate goes up exponentially. So the fact that we're all sitting here wearing a mask right now, it's not sitting at 51%. It's sitting at more like 80, 90% effective rate, which that is, that's why we would require everyone to wear a mask regardless, so that we're not just one person at 51, someone at zero. And while 51% in a test is a fail, in terms of public health, I'd prefer 51% effective to 0%.
So that 51% was based on the performance of the mask, not taking consideration of what everybody was wearing or not. It was actually based on the actual performance of that particular mask?
I understand. And I think that you have to then take into consideration how many, all the other factors when you're doing a study like that. The performance of one person by themselves with the mask or the, and what are the performance of all of the masks together?
That's like saying our, the vaccinations don't work, right?
Vaccinations are 92 to 98% effective. There is going, nothing is going to be 100% unless we all go into isolation again, which is what we're trying to avoid by layering all of these different mitigation efforts is to keep the numbers at less than five by vaccinating, by masking, by physical distancing. If you do all of those things, the, the chances that any of us get coronavirus are gonna be a lot lower than if we are all sitting here without a mask.
So our numbers have been at zero and less than five since last March, with the exception of that December where it actually did spike and go up. And there was, there was.
Since May, since May, read your stats again.
I don't think that's true because I remember March 2020, April 2020, sitting there. I mean, I'm sure we all did it when this all started, is sitting at the dashboard, refresh, refresh, see how many numbers there are. I remember weeks when it was 19, 20 people. And I think we've had the discussion before in meetings about the math. And you're not, just because it's reported at five, that person was contagious for at least 48 hours before they tested positive. How many people did they come into contact and then spread coronavirus to? And those people have not been tested or developed symptoms yet. So that, just because it, the number reported is less than five, we can't assume that that is the definite number. You have to assume that there's at least 10 times more.
Yes, and the, the pandemic update for providers call, which is hosted by the Rhode Island Department of Health every two weeks. And I'm fortunate enough to listen to that. And last week's call made it very clear that in this state, we are on the precipice of a surge. So they expect cases to increase. And it'll coincide with the opening of school. The first couple of weeks of September will be the worst. At least that was the estimate last week by the Department of Health. So while we've been doing so well and we got to be so fortunate and realize how fortunate we are, but, and yes, we're a small community, but we're not isolated. We're, we're not an island and people come and go in and out of this community. Parents of children work outside of this community. So there's a risk and we're at a surge. And they, the CDC has just talked about a study done by University of Pittsburgh. They studied the effects. I was just mentioning this earlier. They've studied the effects of masking, social distancing, as well as vaccination now. But to Lori's point about layering, that's what they're saying. They're saying masks absolutely work. Limiting exposure in places like restaurants, schools, social distancing. When you do it appropriately, pre-surge, maybe you'll have an effect and you'll suppress the surge. So how could we, with that information, how could we not think, maybe this will help? Maybe this will help one of our citizens? If it's one, if it happens to be someone in your family, you're gonna be really happy about that.
So when did we start wearing masks last year, right? When was that? What'd you say?
The end of March, I think.
March 17, March 30?
Yeah.
My point being is that the mask didn't help us when we had a uptick in December or through around the holidays.
I said, imagine that you have to look at compliance, Mike, as well. You have to look at mask compliance. If you have a community where the compliance for mask wearing is low, you're going to have a high transmission rate. I can send you that data as well. I've read it.
I mean, Michael, do you think that all of us in here want to be wearing this mask? Anything other than the safety of the people in this room?
I don't want to do it out of fear, Travis. That's what I don't want to do it out of.
I don't want to do it. I'm not doing it out of fear. I'm doing it out of being proactive. I take my shoes off at the, at the airport to get on the plane because they tell me to be proactive. I don't, I don't hear people putting their hands up about that. You're gonna wear a mask if you want to go to Disney with your kids, if you want to go to vacation, if you want to go in a museum, if you want to go in a restaurant. But you're not gonna wear a mask when you go into school? I mean, I, I feel you with the mask. It's frustrating. But what is the solution? We just talked about the layering. If you are not for masking in school, then you must be for distance learning because it is inevitable. It is going to be a challenge with all the layers in place because we can't control people coming in and out of the hub in terms of Little Compton. They're gonna go live about their lives, come in, their kids are gonna participate in other activities, see other kids, come in. Masking and the other layers are the, are our best bet. If we don't do masking, we will be distance learning by the end of September.
So you don't think that we as a community have done well?
We've done well, but I also understand how it's airborne and it's transmitted.
And we can't give up just because.
I didn't say anybody was giving, I didn't say anybody was giving up because the biggest thing before, prior to March of this year, there was no vaccinations. And let's face it, we'll never get to 100% vaccination, right? Among everybody, because you're not gonna get everybody to vaccinate. And if everybody thinks, if you think that, you're.
I agree with you.
You're just fooling yourself. So I think we're in a really good position as a community here in town.
We don't, we have, you want to talk about 51%, though. I think our town vaccination rate is at 48%. I think the last time I checked. So that's definitely a failing grade. Do you, do you think that's what doing wrong?
I think it's actually higher than that. And one of the things that was, has been discussed with the numbers that, as far as the vaccination rates, is there wasn't, that is just coming about, that was being not taken into consideration, is that you have a lot of people that are getting their vaccinations at their doctors. Since we live so close to Massachusetts, that's not taking into consideration in our, in our numbers and our stats for our town. So.
But if you can look at those stats, then I can bring these stats. And if that's what we're basing it off of, then that is what we're.
Hey, listen, I'm talking about reports that are being given to me to read, to better understand it.
Am I? The report that is online says that Little Compton's vaccination rate is, as of the last time I checked, which was before our meeting last Wednesday, was under 50%. And that is the official Rhode Island, state of Rhode Island's data marker, which is the same place that you got that data. So if you want to compare data, you have to compare that. And we can't make assumptions about where people's doctors are and where they.
I'm not making, I'm not making assumptions. I just.
To do it based on a number.
I just know the situations that are going on because of conversations that I've had, that they're not, not all the back.
All 2,000 that are missed, that are not represented in that percentage, though. Did you?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Did you speak to all 2,500 people in the town that have not been vaccinated according to the state of Rhode Island? And did they all tell you that their doctors are in Massachusetts and they were vaccinated?
Why would I do that?
Well, you're just saying, oh, I talked to some people and their situation.
No, I didn't talk to some people. It's basically people that are within the medical profession within this town, that there was, there was some misrepresentation of numbers just even to the next town over.
So it could very well be, but to get herd immunity, you need something like 80%, 70, 80. We're nowhere near that. Nowhere near. That's herd immunity.
I'll, I'll disagree with you on that because we were just under 80, just under 80% based on the people that were eligible for vaccinations.
The state of Rhode Island isn't even at 80%. The state of Rhode Island just hit 70% itself. We're gonna have this discussion, it's gonna be based on facts and data and science. And the fact and the data is that less than 50% of Little Comptoners eligible for the vaccine are fully vaccinated.
And let's not forget the children who can't be vaccinated.
Right, especially in this building every day. Especially in the school building. Our school building serves pre-K to eighth grade. That is five years old to 12 years old. The 12-year-olds are in seventh and eighth grade, halfway through seventh grade to eighth grade. What percentage of our school population is that? Less than 5%? We can't make a decision based off of vaccine eligibility when all of our school population essentially is not eligible for a vaccine.
And out of that eligible group, less than half of them are vaccinated.
So we're talking maybe 3% of our school populate, school kids are vaccinated. Getting off. But.
Yeah, no.
Can I, if we, if we saved one kid, it would be worth it to me. It really would.
Probably nobody wants to lose a kid. That, that, that's not, that's not the point of my conversation. Nobody wants to lose a kid. I don't, that's, and everybody wants to be safe and everybody wants the best for their kids.
Yeah.
And I, and I get that.
So this is the safest way. This is one of the things that we can do.
Okay.
And I want, actually, we're not even talking about the kids yet. We're talking about school committee meetings. We're talking about adults and people who are going to participate as members of the public in these conversations. So what this discussion topic is about is requiring all of us sitting here and anybody who chooses to come in person to wear a mask. That is why we're still offering the Zoom, so that people at home do not have to come wear a mask and they can still have their public comment.
Can I add something to? So to speak to the, the masking of us, you know, I, I think it's unreasonable to ask the students, the faculty, the administration, the powers that be that come in and out of this building and make it function, to wear a mask when we're not going to practice that.
And that was my point.
Yeah.
When we were discussing coming back to in-person meetings. I thought it was unfair of us to have our staff, faculty, students in person since the middle of September last year, when we were meeting virtually the whole time. What kind of message does that send?
Correct.
We are the elected officials. We are the ones who are saying, go to work, go to school. It's safe, but we don't have to do any of that. That, to me, does not seem fair and that doesn't seem like good leadership.
So let me just ask this other question while we're on this. How does this, are you trying to pinpoint this just towards the school committee meetings?
That's what this discussion item says.
And, right, so before the, we came back to school as you, for in-person meetings, there was, the gymnasium was being used for rec basketball. No mask, no nothing. So how does that go forward now?
Rec basketball right now, going forward?
Yeah, so any, any use of the gymnasium or anything like that, how's that gonna be handled?
Um, I don't, I don't know. That's not the action item we're discussing right now. We're discussing school committee meetings. If that's something you would like to have put on policy, we can, we can do that another time.
This is John Anderson. I'm gonna jump in and say that the agenda item is limited to wearing masks at school committee meetings. And it's not about policies for students, for people using the gym. It's about wearing masks at school committee meeting. And I would appreciate it if anyone would stick to the agenda item, please.
Thanks, John. I will take a note, though, that we need to maybe put that on a future meeting about school use and masks.
As of right now.
The chair.
As of right now, my guidance is.
Anyone? John, do you have something more to say?
It's the prerogative of the chair to set agendas with, working with the superintendent for future meetings. I just want, I'm just really want everyone to stick to this meeting, which is about wearing masks at school committee meetings.
Yeah.
I, I guess the, the place I was going with that is, is that we're gonna be special? Only people that come to our meetings have to wear a mask and nobody else? That's why I was trying to ask, John.
I, I, I understand. I just want to be very careful that we don't tread beyond the topic on the agenda because, you know, to be frankly, I, I'm sure that there are many people following this and people who will be unhappy one way or the other will be filing your open meeting acts complaint. And I do not want a Little Compton on the list to get one of those.
Thank you, John. Um, okay, so does anyone have any more comments about requiring all attendees at school committee meetings to wear masks regardless of vaccination status?
I'd like to just make one more comment. I don't know if this will make you feel better, Mike, or anybody in the public listening, but personally, I'm not wearing a mask out of fear. I'm wearing it out of care and compassion for all of you sitting here and for the community. If this is what the medical community says is one of the best ways I can do my part in addition to being vaccinated, to help keep my community healthy, then I will be happy to wear a mask at school committee meetings and any other place where it is deemed proper to, until this pandemic has officially ended. And while it's not my favorite accessory, it's, that's not, that's not the point here. It's, public health is what's most important. And this is one of the many ways that we can ensure that Little Compton stays at under five cases.
So one last thing I want to say, what's our exit strategy on this? As far as not requiring masks to be worn at meetings?
So I think that when we feel like the pandemic is a safer place, that we'll call another meeting and make another vote. I, I don't think we can have an exit strategy right now. We don't know, we don't know how this is gonna go. We don't know how this, what the surge is gonna look like. We don't know how long it's gonna last. It's very easy for us to call a meeting about this. If next month, there's zero cases in Rhode Island, we'll put it on the agenda and vote to not wear masks at meeting anymore.
I just find that everything is, everybody's saying that they're all running on stats, science, you know, scientific data. And, and basically, we're gonna just throw this policy out and say, right, we're gonna wear a mask, but we don't, that we have no, like, if we reach a certain point, then we won't do it anymore. So basically, this is open-ended, is what you're saying.
If the World Health Organization or the powers that be lift the pandemic as it's a global status, I think we can have a discussion then. Or if we get 100% vaccination status.
Everybody has a dream.
I know. You asked for an exit strategy. We can discuss it when those things happen.
I think there are just too many possibilities that would allow us to have an exit strategy that we couldn't name them all and wide pigeonholas in, in that. I think we will, we will either know or feel like the, the pandemic is subsiding. We will hear from professionals, medical advisors, that it's safe.
Your people and Michael, please. I'd love to hear these alternative viewpoints.
If we go by all the numbers that, if we're gonna base what goes on in this school based on all the numbers that are in different parts of the state, different cities and towns where they don't do as well, because maybe they have a greater population or whatever the scenario would be, because we'll never get out of this if, if we're gonna base our, our policy on other parts of the state.
But the cases could rise next week, Mike. That's also.
Go down next week.
And if that's, if we have, see, right now, we're seeing a trend of the past four weeks, we've had less than five or five cases.
It's actually been, yeah, it's been less than five.
Okay, so less than five.
Which means.
Still one. That's, okay, that's still one more than we'd like to have. If that continues to trend, then of course, we're gonna keep wearing masks. If we go back to months and months of zero cases, then I think that is when we can have the discussion to, or the CDC or any other reputable health medical organization issues guidance saying, like they did a few months ago, that masks are no longer required for vaccinated people. If they issue some sort of guidance like that again, maybe that's when we revisit this. But there are too many possibilities as to what could happen over the next even couple of days, let alone months, that we can't say that, oh, this is exactly what's gonna need to happen when we can no longer require masks.
But we haven't been at months and months and months without, at, with no cases. There's always been, there's always been cases.
But we have been at zero in Little Compton for several weeks in a row or a few weeks in a row. And now we're quickly on the rise with school starting and with meetings in person.
Again, less, so less than five could be, could be one person.
It could be one, but it's not zero.
But Mike, just like you were saying about data and vaccines, vaccines aren't 100% effective either. I could, I'm fully vaccinated. I could come to this meeting with all of you and we could be sitting here unmasked and I could be a carrier of the Delta variant. And I could give it to you and you could bring it home to your kids.
Correct.
Your children who are under the age of 12 and might not be able to be vaccinated. And we don't want that to happen. This is not to be, this is not a political statement. It is not anything made out of fear. It is just a protective measure so that we can protect us. We can protect the public that comes into view and participate in our meetings. It's just one other layer in addition to the Zoom attendees that we have to protect us and our community. It's just one other layer in addition to the Zoom attendees that we have to protect us and our community. Do you want to protect the community?
I'm done, we're, we're done, we're not gonna agree on this, so let's just take a vote, if you want, probably it's up to you, it's up to you.
Okay. So, um, I would love to hear a motion, do I have a motion to require all attendees at school committee meetings to wear a mask regardless of vaccination status in accordance with the school dress code, so moved.
Second.
Okay, um, we're gonna take a roll call vote.
Polly Allen.
Hi.
Travis Adi.
Hi.
Anna Ayar.
Hi.
Peter Kenahan.
Hi.
Michael Rucha.
No.
Um. Oh, I apologize, um, well, I guess we can, we can take, um, we should have asked if there was any more, um, comments from the public, I don't see any raised hands, we can certainly take comments now. If anyone has a comment. Okay, seeing none. No more comments here. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You have a motion?
Second.
Thank you, uh, roll call vote, Mariah, please.
Polly Allen.
Hi.
Travis Adi.
Hi.
Anna Ayar.
Hi.
Peter Kenahan.
Hi.
Michael Rucha.
Hi.
Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, John, thank you. Community members like.